Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which it stands, for which it stands. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not that tall. Hello, everybody. Happy New Year. It's a happy new year, but I would also like to have a start the meeting off with a moment of silence. We lost Bruce Lazar, as I'm sure you all know, so if I can ask for a moment of silence and remember Bruce. Like to open up the floor for public participation. Is there anyone on the phone? Bob, for public participation? No, we're not doing that? Okay. Anyone here for public participation? No one coming forward? Okay, we will move to the report of the chairman. I want to open up a discussion to the to the board members about our meeting times. We normally traditionally have met at 7:30 and I've and I'd just like to ask everybody if it would be possible to move that up to 6:30 or 7:00. 7:30 makes for long meetings. It also makes it very long for our staff who have all been here since 6:00, 6:30 in the morning. I've talked to a few of you, not really sure, it's just always been that way. So would anyone have any objection to moving it to 7:00 or 6:30? Your thoughts on that as a regular course of business?
6:30 would be preferred.
6:30. I just want to make sure that we're leaving time in there for policy committee or finance committee if they meet before, right?
That's the only thing I'm worried about. I don't like 6:30 either. I'm just worried about leaving enough time. So do we do 6:30 and then when we have policy, we do 7:00? I don't know. I don't know. Okay. Hey, I'm just.
Do we have a little more consistency? 7:00?
Yeah, I think 7:00, I think half an hour is good to start. I do worry about policy committee or other committees that want to meet beforehand, but that's.
Yeah, agree, agree. Is everybody else okay with 7:00? Okay, we'll move that to 7:00 for the starting the next meeting. Shannon, is that okay work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Christine's on the way. Thank you, everybody. The next issue that I wanted to inform the board about is, I don't know, last meeting we spoke about looking into IT software and equipment to go to a Zoom capability here as well as streaming. And Joe reached out to Paul, they looked into that. And to have that capability in this room is going to cost just over $14,000. That's 14,000, that's not budgeted. That's a lot more than I thought. I don't think it's appropriate that we spend 14,000 of unbudgeted money on Zoom access. If we had 14,000, it should go to something more important, in my opinion. Consensus of the room?
I agree.
You want to hold off on it? Yeah?
I'm following it. Have you tuned, right?
Yeah, we'll still stream, but I just, I just, I think that's way too much for us to be spending out of budget. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided in our packets? I have a motion by Jerry, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Nick?
Yeah, just two amendments on the minutes from December 20th.
December 20th? Go ahead.
The first one is the votes at the bottom of the minutes for the calendar and Policy 9311 are flipped. So we just have to, I voted against the calendar but in favor of the policies, just to flip those.
Okay.
And then also the motion to approve Policy 9311 as presented, that says in the minutes, we didn't approve it as presented, we approved it.
With those modifications.
As amended. And I'm not sure if it would be appropriate in the discussion of that part of the minutes to say exactly what was changed, or just people can go look at the changes, but it definitely was not as presented, however you want to discuss it is fine.
Agreed. Joe, we can review that.
Yep, it's Diane right there. Diane, did you get both those?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have those written down on what we read on.
Right.
Okay. We'll do that. Any further discussion? All in favor with those comments from Nick? Aye, thank you very much, motion passes. Report of the committees, I want to start with our student representatives. Thank you very much.
And also, Happy New Year. Today was the first day back for students after relaxing winter break. Plans surrounding midterm exams are being discussed, and many seniors have been finishing up their college application, as many regular decision deadlines are this month. With most games this break resulting with losses, hopefully this Wednesday's wrestling match and this Thursday's basketball games and track needs bring happier endings. Lots of uncertainty roams the air about how the winter seasons will play out, but for now, we can only hope for the best. The Massey Prom Fashion Show needs senior models for the show. The Spring 2022 Show will be on March 16th, and applications are available starting today and will be due on January 10th at 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some news on midterms coming up that you might want to wait a couple of minutes.
Superintendent Cobza, are you involved in the fashion show?
Not anymore. I don't get invited to anything.
He's just over a seat a little bit.
Well, it's good, it's good.
Good segue, Jerry, to the report of the superintendent.
Well, I guess.
I'm sorry, wait a minute. Actually, any other reports of the committees? Sorry. Okay, we will move to the report of the superintendent.
All right, I guess I'll, I guess I'll put that one first in front of the special education update. So I know, I think Steve is back there, Swenson. I know Steve talked to his, his faculty today. We had a number of absences before the, before the break as a result of this latest variant with, with COVID. Today, we had 300 students out, not necessarily all with COVID, but you know, we had a number, a large number across the district of students out that had tested positive. We anticipate that to be the case, you know, for the next few weeks. So with that in mind, the high school, Steve met with the staff today, and they agreed to do a very, I would call it very limited modified exam schedule. Moving those days to regular days of school rather than half-day exam days in the classes that still have to take exams, they'll do that during the class periods. That would be for possibly some of our AP classes, or probably even more so with the UConn Early College Experience classes that students are taking that are getting college credit. Those exams are mandated in those classes. So some of those students will, will still have to take exams, we'll just do it during, during the school day. But by and large, is that pretty fair?
Yeah, many, many will still have exams, they're just not going to be the traditional 10% of the overall grade. These UConn classes, they mandate that they're 10% of the grades, that's different, but most of the other classes will still have exams, they're just not going to be the two-hour exam period, they'll be during the regular class period, and not be 10% of the overall grade. They'll either be part of the quarter two or part of the quarter three grade, because they'll have to move them next week.
Thanks, Steve. And so those days, Steve, and I forget, I know you had it on, as of right now, it's scheduled for, I think, the 15th, 16th?
No, 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 they were scheduled, 13th and 14th, and then the 18th and 19th.
Yeah.
Two days after the month's end, the two days before the weekend, then I'll be quarter two, the two days after the long-term training will start before the third grade.
Thanks, Steve.
Took the four days and broke it up into three quarters.
Thank you.
So the half-days will become full days?
Correct.
And the, the midterms will be modified as appropriate per class?
They'll be given probably in parts, we have 75-minute periods, so it still gives a good chunk of time, it just may need to take its two parts versus one or two hours.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
Nick?
Do the half-day to full days, is that technically a change of the calendar that needs work?
We will have to update the, we will have to update the, I don't know if the, I do think the district calendar, it doesn't indicate it.
It doesn't. What it is, Nick, is it's a, it's when it lists the quarters, those four days were not within any quarter.
Oh, okay.
They were outside of it, so we're basically just changing the end of the quarters. It was only half-days for Massey, which actually comes at a cost to the district.
Oh, that makes sense.
So by going to full day, we actually save just money, because it won't count as an additional cost on you. So, but they're not, those days weren't in.
That's right.
So it's not gonna, it shouldn't, that's my opinion only, it really shouldn't impact the calendar, because it's just notes of when our quarters begin and end.
Okay.
You guys could probably want to leave now. Hopefully that cheers your night up a little bit. Just like to invite Darlene up to give the monthly special education update. And Dark, can you see from?
Can I see? Will I pass it?
Oh, you have, oh, you have it in front of you, that's right.
No, I can't see. I can't have glasses for that, I don't know where. Okay. So, not surprisingly, not committing changes in Special Ed this month. So we're actually down, if you look at the enrollment, we're actually down one student. There were no students who enrolled with, into the district with specialized instruction already. Three students were dismissed from services, two students were aged out this month, and four students were made eligible during the month of December. So that brings us back to 508 students in the Special Education Program. So we're down. And also on the financial side, there have been minimal changes since December 1st, when Jen reported. I usually highlight outside agencies, public and private tuition, transportation, independent evaluations, and legal fees. None of these lines changed since December 1st, so everything is still the same there. But if you take a look at the bottom line, as we continue to spend down other budget lines, you'll notice that the available budget was reused by approximately $26,000, but that's included, you know, small things in all the other lines. I do want to remind you that our department usually experiences increases in referrals around this time of the year, so next month, you may see changes because of our student PPTs that will be going on, and you know, that you may be noticing some changes in line items because of changes in programs for students.
Any questions? Okay.
Thanks, Dark.
Thanks, Darlene.
I just want to thank everyone for responding to the, the survey on the Cabe workshop, our Board of Education workshop. We're all set for Saturday, February 12th, 9:00 to 12:30, for those who may get. We'll be doing that up at, up at Central Office. One thing I just wanted to throw out there, I know during the discussion on Capitol, we talked about doing building tours. I know it'll make for a little bit longer day, but since we're all going to be together that day, maybe that would be a day for whoever can, can come, you know, can, for however long you can make it, maybe we do the building tours that day. I could ask Diane to come in and, you know, walk us through each of the buildings, and we could go from, you know, start at Monroe Elementary and go to the other buildings around, around town. So if everybody's okay with that. The, the workshop goes from 9:00 to 12:30, probably grab some lunch at 12:30, and then, you know, do our first building tour at like 1 o'clock right at, right at Monroe. I imagine it won't take too long at each building, but we got to drive from building to building.
Joe, the question I want, sorry, Shannon, go ahead.
What's the date of that, the 9th to 12:30, Saturday, February 12th?
12th.
Thank you.
I know we have two members that cannot make it due to prior commitments that day, so are we all comfortable with moving forward with that? Or should we try to see if there's another day a month or two down the road? Or is this going to be something that we're just never going to find something where all nine of us are available on a Saturday morning? I don't want to keep kicking it down the can if we think it's going to be inevitable. Nick?
I was just going to say, I think the farther we get into the spring, the more things like.
The harder it gets?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think.
Agreed. Earlier, the better.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. And if the, if the build tour is a good idea, okay with everybody.
Yeah, I think anyone that could say, I think it would be good for people. Yeah, Nick?
Joe, you just had a question about this 30% at Massey being out today. Did you see that at other schools today?
It was about, I think we had about 26, 27% up, about 300 students.
Oh, 300 students.
I think we were at, and I, actually, I have a call with the principals and the nurses tomorrow just to make sure that we're kind of tracking the next few weeks to see where we are. I think the numbers roughly at the other schools were about 15 to 18%. And a lot of, a lot of people, you know, called out this morning, I see lead nod in her head, a lot of people called out this morning that had tested positive over break, so they didn't, they didn't come in today.
And did we, did we experience any of the teacher or sub-staffing issues, like, I mean, in some other districts, just, you know, in Sonia, looking at the news, it was dire?
Yeah.
How was that on, I know it's only day one, but?
We were able to get by today, and today was even extra challenging with the funeral services. I, I have to say, and you know, I said it to the staff already, but I was just amazed at how, you know, the outpouring of support in this community and people pitching in, coming, you know, non-classroom teachers from Massey going to Stepney and, you know, other places. Bruce, you know, worked at Fawn Hollow and Chalk Hill, and when Chalk Hill split, some of the teachers went to Jockey Hollow, some of them went to the elementary schools. So there was people from all over the district there, and people pitched in. That was only for a little brief period, and we can't expect that every day, but we're keeping a really close eye on, on staffing. We were able, we were okay today, but we'll see. We, we, I know just right before we left here, Jack got a call from a teacher that had just, you know, received her positive, her positive test today. So, you know, we're keeping a really close eye on it. I was going to talk about our bus issue this morning that I had sent an email out about earlier. You know, that was, that was another issue, but for right now, we're holding on.
Good. Thank you.
Joe, what percentage of those 300 were positive tests versus contact traced?
Steve, you had that for me, I think it was like.
Yeah, there was only about 34 that we were notified of positive, the rest were just all out.
None of them were, zero were contact traced.
None were contact traced. We didn't do any contact.
They were, they were just call-outs.
They were just, they called out sick. I mean, we're, we, I mean, we're making an effort, and one of the biggest things we're talking to folks about is if your kids are sick, keep them home. So I don't know if that, if that was a big part of it. So.
And, and Joe, we're not doing the contact tracing anymore, right, with that change?
Yeah, not with that change. And I'll talk, I'll talk a little bit about that too, but yeah, we are not doing the contact tracing. Just as we were talking about the staffing shortage, I just want to thank, you know, the Jockey Hollow parents, who students were delayed this morning, as well as the team over at All-Star. I got a call at about 5:40 this morning from Mike Lawler, the manager at All-Star. You know, as of last night, you know, as we were leaving last night about 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, Jack and I had just spoken to Mike, and he's like, I think we're all right, we're going to be all right, you know, tomorrow, seems good. And, you know, in the overnight, he had six drivers call out. So it was, we had to have two buses pick up one run, so basically, we couldn't cover a bus, so two buses picked up half, you know, one, one bus picked up half the kids, another bus picked up another half the kids. So that run ran about 20 to 30 minutes late. Then we had to delay another bus about an hour as, actually, Mike himself drove a bus, finished, finished one, one loop, went back and picked those, those students up to do that. So I also want to thank Jack and Mike as we were, you know, scrambling this morning at 6:00 to get out community messaging to those specific parents. What's nice about our school messenger system is we can target those specific buses and just notify those families that, you know, through email, voice call, and, and text, that the buses were going to be delayed and what they could, and what they could do. I know a number of students on the bus that was delayed an hour, the families drove the students in, so. But it was, it was harrowing, you know, we already sent an email back out to that bus that was delayed an hour this morning to let them know that we may have a similar situation in the morning. As of right now, it could be okay, but Mike Lawler, the manager, told us, you know, we could have a similar problem with that one bus tomorrow, so. I hope not, but I know in other districts, the busing situation was even more dire than that. So All-Star's been a really good, they've been a good partner with us. And then the last thing I just wanted to talk about, as you were talking, Dave, about the contact tracing and the isolation, you know, starting, I was, I think, New Year's Eve, it might have been the, the day before New Year's Eve, but all the way up through New Year's Eve, through Saturday, through Sunday, I keep calling it Blizzard, of emails came in from the State Department of Education and Department of Public Health with updated guidance on COVID. I sent out a, hopefully, I think you all probably got the pretty detailed message to the community last night with a lot of those updates. According to the CSDE, and I'm going to read this part, according to the Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health, these changes were designed to focus on the increased risk from individuals reporting for school-related activities with active symptoms of the illness. And I think equally importantly, to concentrate school health, school health and nursing staff away from investigating relatively low in-school exposures and toward the identification, early isolation, and clinical management of students and staff with active symptoms that could be related to COVID. Long story short, let the nurses work on people who are sick. We've been doing a lot of contact tracing for a long time, putting a lot of kids out of school. One of the things that we've found is that the mitigation strategies have been working. There has been very low transmission in schools, not in Monroe, not in Connecticut, but anywhere that where they're applying them. So, you know, it's, you know, this was to allow our nurses to be able to do their job and deal with, you know, sick, sick folks. A few changes from that, I just want to just go over a few things. Number one is the isolation period. One of the things we've learned throughout this whole period is isolation is what sick, sick people do, quarantines is what healthy people do. The isolation period, so people who test positive for COVID can now return on the sixth day of school, provided they're fever-free for 24 hours, and provided that their symptoms have, and these are the words of the Connecticut State Department of Ed, their symptoms have significantly improved over that time. Once again, going back to contact tracing, you know, probably the biggest thing, because of the infrequent conversion of person-to-person, I'm sorry, the infrequent transmission of person-to-person contact in school, DPH recommended the discontinuation of contact tracing. With the discontinuation of contact tracing, also comes the discontinuation of the screen and stay program that we were using before. If we're not contact tracing, you're not, you're not doing screen and stay. Again, both of those were at the recommendation of the Department of Public Health, based on the CDC guidance that had been put out there about three or four days earlier. The state also clarified the language on remote instruction, that only the state legislature or the governor had the authority to issue an emergency declaration permitting remote learning in, in a school or in a district. The other, so much stuff came at us. Another piece was on the distribution of N95 masks and self-test kits. Huge thank you. As I was away last week, I was getting updates and calls constantly from our police captain, Keith White, who's also our emergency management director. Keith went today, he picked up a shipment of N95 masks for staff and self-test kits for students and staff. So, and the tests are primarily reserved for students and staff who are exhibiting symptoms of, of COVID, or the ones for students can also be used in circumstances if we find that we have a number of cases in a particular classroom, we give them out to the rest of the classroom for people to, you know, prophylactically take the test to make sure that they're okay. You know, my message was, you know, the same message that it's been for a while now. You know, most importantly, we encourage folks to get vaccinated and tested and continue to implement our, our mitigation strategies, which, like I said, have been, have been successful so far. And, you know, like I said, the most important thing, and I think we saw this today, and this is going to be, it's going to be a huge partnership with our families, is that if, if you're sick, you know, stay home, keep your, keep your kids home. You know, it used to be a badge of honor if, or a badge of courage to come to work if you weren't feeling well. Kind of now you're persona non grata if, if you're sick. So just ask people to stay home, to make our schools as safe as possible for everybody. That was all I had. Those were the, a quick summary of the updates. There is a, a grid that I'm going to share with the community tomorrow on, on isolations and quarantines and whatnot, specifically from the Department of Public Health. It mirrors a lot of what I said, but there's also going to be some responsibility on the part of parents that, you know, we're not going to contact trace in schools, but if there's exposures out of school, which are considered more high-risk exposures, because that's where, you know, to sleep over, the kids aren't, you know, they're not wearing mitigation, they're on, you know, they're more likely to be closer to each other and whatnot, you know, it's going to have to be a partnership with us and the families. So I'll send that, that out tomorrow.
Just a quick question, the, the, when the DPH put out the December 31st guidance about, they did use that language about the legislature or the governor talking about remote learning for the district, but there were also new things in there about remote learning being able to become part of an IEP, remote learning being able to become part of a course of study if a student had someone in the home who was immunocompromised, who they lived with?
That was, that's actually not new. That's been, that's been our, that's been the case before. So if we've had an immunocompromised student, we go through the, Darlene and her staff go through the PPT process with the family, and we can offer, you know, they don't get, we're not doing hybrid instruction, so they would get homebound instruction to the equivalent of four hours a day, or I think it's somewhere around there, two hours a day.
And if there's a, if it's, if they're not a special education student without an IEP, but they want to, they want to use that, the part being that if they live with someone who's immunocompromised, would they, would they need an IEP or would their?
No, I apologize, Nick, you're right on that part too. Wouldn't necessarily need an IEP for that. They just need, would need documentation, and we would have to go through, we would have a process that we'd have to go through with the family.
Got it. Okay.
To see, are there other modifications that we could make to the students' day and whatnot before we, we go right to that. But you're absolutely right, you don't need to have, you don't have to be a special education student for that piece.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, pretty significant change of course, right?
Yeah.
Obviously for the positive, especially for the kids. What did the DPH provide in terms of why they would change policies like this?
Think a lot, I think a lot of it was on, was predicated on the, on the, on the rapidness, I don't know if rapidity's a word, of this particular variant, and the fact that it seems to have, you know, but two days before symptoms and two to three days after symptoms is the most infectious period. And so that's why the, the movement is to allow students to start coming back after, or staff and students, provided they're fever-free and, fever-free and significantly reduce symptoms on day six or so. That was, that was a big piece of their, of their, you know, adjustment to change the isolation periods and the quarantine periods. And I think the other piece, going back to the, going back to the contact tracing, was just local data, state data, national data, that we're putting a lot of kids out that were, you know, and not seeing a lot of in-school transmission, so.
Any other questions for the superintendent? No? Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to number eight, old business, the superintendent's 2223 proposed budget. I'd like to start it off with Ron. I asked Ron to do a little presentation or discuss with us on the budget process so that we can understand how the decisions we make here go forward to Town Hall, the different boards, how it gets worked out to the final number at referendum, so that we can understand the whole process. So go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, what I was going to do is start with the process. Joe, could you roll for the, the?
Yeah, well.
I have that up. They're, the ribbons are across the top. So what I, I don't know if everyone can read that, but I'll kind of walk through it. This, this kind of explains the process from start to finish, and the, the first stage of the budget throughout the town begins on the board's side, out at the schools and into departments, or the public schools. You can see, you know, as Joe had mentioned last meeting, the process, you know, begins with the schools and the departments of the board putting their budgets together in October. Those get pulled into the superintendent's budget early November, when that starts getting pulled together. And as you know, the superintendent's budget gets presented to you guys first meeting of December. Step three there is showing the board, once you guys approve your budget, it gets consolidated with the town department. with the town department budgets and gets consolidated into the first selectmen's budget. And then the steps that, from the first selectmen's budget, it gets passed on to council, gets passed on to Board of Finance, and then it goes to finally to referendum. The steps on the town side that are critical to the board's budget is the first selectmen and then the Board of Finance stages, because that's where it will get reviewed. Is that, I don't know, anyone have any questions regarding that? Kind of a simple, it does show, you know, from start to finish, you're north of six months. It's a, it's a, it's a marathon. Yeah. And we'll be getting new information in April for the board's budget. So, I mean, that's just the reality of the situation. So, it's a fluid process.
Ron, the first selectmen, can he make additions or only reductions?
I believe he could do either.
Okay, as well as Board of Finance?
Correct. Okay, so the next thing I was going to do is jump over to the town website. And this is probably going to be redundant for some of you, but I'll just go through the, the, um, town budgets are on the town website. So, if you go to the homepage, go under important links, annual town budgets, brings you over to the finance department, annual town budgets, I think we've got about 10, 12 months, years on there. So, the 21, 22 approved annual budget, you'll see the prior year was an adopted budget because it did not go to referendum that year. The beginning part of the budget, it actually goes through the flow chart I just showed you. The pro, that process is spelled out in the town charter, and the section of the town charter, the narrative basically follows in line with the flow chart I just showed you. So, the next part I wanted to, you know, during the, this first, I'm sorry, I'm, how am I going to choose? So, the annual budget process and the first selectmen's overview, he gives a budget overview, a budget discussion, I guess you'd call it his kind of sales pitch, he, you know, explains the budget in detail. And also, part of his overview is the mil rate calculation, which is what Dave wanted me to discuss. The grand list, basically, the grand list is the value of all the property in town and its breakout. So, you can see the breakout in the town, there's revals every five years, so you'll see some adjustments. About $2.2 billion last, this, again, this is last year's budget, we're expecting that to go slowly up this year, the assessor does not have the final numbers in yet. But, how this goes into play with the mil rate calc, you got the total grand list, I'm going to just scroll down a couple pages, this is the mil rate calculation. You'll see the net taxable grand list, this number here is in line with, and here's all the detail from that other page. There, you, you do have to provide for a contingency in the mil rate calc. You've got the Board of Assessment Appeals and potential lawsuits that could adjust the values of real estate, and you also have state and town tax benefits that'll reduce down the taxable grand list. So, you come down to a net grand list, then you've got a, you've got a number that comes from the, now, this is where the budget and the mil rate calc come in, kind of align with each other. You've got a number that is required to balance your budget, this number here. Tax collections on the current levy required to balance the budget. If you go to the summary of the budget here, you'll see that's, that's this number here, current year tax, current year taxes. The Board of Finance comes up with a projected tax, tax collection rate, which is based on historical actuals. We collect roughly 99% of the taxes on the current levy every year. So, based on a 98.7% tax collection rate, in order to balance the budget and collect taxes of 79 million, you'd have to levy $80 million worth of taxes on the grand list. And basically, that's, that's how, that's how you get, get to the mil rate. The mil rate is basically the projected, it's, I'm going to put in a little cheat sheet here, so it's, it's basically, you've got B divided by A times 1,000, so it's, it's your taxes required, that you, that you require, the taxes required to be levied in order to collect the, to balance the budget there, divided by the total grand list comes up to mil rate, times 1,000 comes up to your mil rate. I don't know if anyone's, does that make sense?
So, Ron, if, if you collected 100%, they would bring in 80,570.
Correct.
They're projecting that at 98.7, they'll collect 79,527, and that's, and that's big.
Now, as, as part of the budget, you're always collecting prior year taxes, and those are, you know, those are budgeted. You've got supplemental taxes, which are new motor vehicles purchased during the year, supplemental tax bill goes out for those, and then prior year taxes. So, those are budgeted. But they're just not part of the mil rate calc. Because again, it's not on the current grand list that they're, that they're generating the tax on a prior grand list. So, that was pretty much, that was pretty much it. Now, adding to that, I think, Dave, you wanted me to discuss the whole assigned fund balance. You know, the last couple of years, a lot of you have probably heard, you know, the assignment of fund balance. And basically, you've got revenue and financing sources. This is the revenue side of the budget. Now, included on the revenue side of the budget, you've got appropriations of fund balance down at the bottom. Basically, when you're appropriating fund balance in the budget, you're, you've got a structural deficit built into the budget. Last fiscal year, we had 8.5 million, which was, which was, fund balance, which was appropriated. There was a structural deficit of over, you know, $8 million into the budget. Now, having said that, as you know, we, the board had a $2 million surplus, the town had a $2 million surplus, there was a $4 million surplus in revenue, we ended up not needing any of that $8 million. And that was, that was, that was structured that way because we were going into, you know, COVID had just hit, and the Board of Finance, you know, they, they were very conservative with the collection rate. They budgeted 93% collection rate for last year. The, the tax collector ended up collecting, I think the collection rate came in right at around 98.7, so.
Ron, do you have a breakdown of the revenue? Like essentially a pie chart that shows all the, where the revenue is coming from?
So, don't really have a pie chart, but let me see if I can, I can, so in the budget, there's, there is a, this is the revenue summary, and it's, it's kind of tough to read, but. So, la, last year's budget, there was, you know, so taking out the appropriations of fund balance, you were looking at about $88 million of total revenue, 80 of which was current year, was tax collections of any time. The other big piece of revenue is the ECS, education, Quashar and Graham from the state, which is $5.2 million. You know, most of the other revenues in the town, you're, you're looking at coming from interest and dividends from the treasurers, charges for services, licenses and permits, could be from the town clerk or the building department, that type of stuff. So, that's, I mean, no, I, to answer your question, I don't have a pie graph, but.
That's okay. So, the, out of the 81 million in, in revenue up top, which is kind of the catch-all for property, is there a breakdown of that between what's residential versus business?
Um, there is not, but that would be in line with the allocation of the grand list itself, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
So, if, you know, going back to the grand list, you can see residential, of the 2.2 billion, 1.17 is residential.
Ron, all the way at the bottom, the number where you showed the mil rate?
Mm-hmm.
That number at the bottom is the percent, the mil rate and the percent increase that goes to referendum, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The, right there, yeah.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions for Ron on that? On that process? Just that we understand how it all flows from, from, from our decisions here? Okay, thank you. Ron, hang tight. So, ladies and gentlemen, what I wanted to do now was to open up the floor for comments and suggestions on the superintendent's proposed budget. We need to get each other's thoughts on, on his budget, positions, additions, deletions, transfers, kind of like we discussed last year. And I also asked Ron to calculate some numbers and percentages based on our use of the ESAR, ARPESAR grants, because right now, the 5.39% increase is all staff off of the grants and into the operating budget. So, I asked Ron to give us some different scenarios, if we put staff back into those grant fundings, of what would that give us as far as a reduction to our increase, which is a less burden on the taxpayers. It's a less burden on taxpayers without having to reduce staff, minus any other discussions that we have here. Joe, our next meeting's the 18th?
18th.
So, at our next meeting on the 18th, we're going to have to vote on the budget and make any final adjustments before we send it to the first selectmen. So, as we discuss it, please raise your hand, and we'll have a, have a good conversation just about our thoughts on the budget. So, I just wanted to open up to the floor, and go ahead, Ron.
David, just want to, like, you know, I put up the, basically, the analysis.
Great. Okay.
Is that the same code book, do you, gentlemen?
Ron, you want to, you want to take us through that a little bit?
Yes.
Or Joe, either one?
Yeah, so, basically, the, this is what you budgeted in the grants for, for next year, right? Well, that's been approved in the budget for the grants, but it's also, these numbers are included also in the operating budget currently. So, if, if they were, if they were to get pulled out, this, this is how much we could cover in the grant budget, $693,000 in the ESAR II and the ARPESAR grants. And then at the bottom, what I did was I broke out the, down the 693, 744, different percentages if you were to, you know, keep, keep a certain percentage in and/or out of the grant, or back up, back into the grant from the operating budget. And that's how much, that's the amount, and that's the percent of the, from over the prior year appropriation we'd be talking. So, you, that's how much you'd move the percent if you were to move it back into the grant from the operating budget.
Joe, are these positions the ones that we have hired now because of enrollment, including the, the asks for next year?
Yes.
These are all of them?
Yeah, these are all in, these are all in right now.
So, if I'm reading this correctly, I'll just go to the bottom line. If we put, if we retained all these positions and we paid for them with grant money, our, our percentage would go down 1.13%?
Correct.
And that's without cutting any of these? We would use the grant money?
Keeping, using the grant money, keeping those positions, yeah.
Okay. Jerry?
Dave, just a point of order, Ron, can you send us all just that slide?
Yeah.
It's attached to the agenda.
Linked on the agenda.
It's linked on the agenda now.
Thank you.
Nick, go ahead.
I just, just to kick things off about this discussion, I think that, I'm just trying to organize my thoughts. So, I keep going back to that these, this is not what these grants were meant for. That's the biggest thing that I can't get over, is that ESAR and ARP was about, is, is about mitigating learning loss due to COVID. And I've, I grappled with this at the last meeting, I'm still kind of grappling with it, because I firmly believe that this is money that should be covered by the town, especially in light of the surplus that we returned. Now, the counterpoint to that is, the town can come back and say, okay, you had a higher X amount of people at, I'm going to use 700,000, at $700,000, we gave you money that was approved at referendum. And if you have to make that up because you want to use the grant money for other things, then you need to cut somewhere else to make up the hole, because we have to balance, we don't, we can't go to other places to get more money. I understand that argument, but the surplus that we gave back and the reason that these grants were approved by, these are federal grants, by Congress, was to mitigate learning loss due to COVID. I mean, today, I think, is a perfect example about the amount of students that were out, not due to positive COVID tests, due to whatever, whatever reason, that's going to affect us for the rest of this year and going into next year. And the superintendent had a great slide at one of the Board of Finance meetings, they start to blend together after months, about all the different programs that he wanted to start by using the ESAR money to do those things. We had a discussion here before the board, before the new board was sworn in, where George was talking about how we were cutting some of the tutoring money, that the superintendent had a line item for tutoring or, you know, night help, and we were using that to hire these types of teachers. I just, I really struggle with that the grant money is supposed to be used, is not supposed to be used for these things, and it's not like we were in a deficit last year.
Taking away the surplus.
Go ahead.
Part of the conversation, because I totally understand that piece of it, can, can the argument be made that these positions here are, are contributing to essentially decreasing the learning loss? Right? I mean, are, are these positions helping us close that gap?
I think you could, I think you could definitely make that argument.
Because I, I understand the surplus argument for sure, but I, I think having these resources, especially when you have teachers going out, having those additional resources, I think you could make the argument that they are helping close that, that learning loss gap by having those teachers, more teachers and more resources available to support them. How big would the gap be without those resources? Right? I think that, that's, that's where my head goes in terms of having the additional head count there. I mean, the surplus conversation, I think, is something separate there, but I, that would be my argument for how, how I would justify the grant money being used for them.
Jerry?
On the other end, end of that too, you know, these are operational expenses. No matter how we look at it, operational expenses are supposed to be part of our budget and the town budget. Now, Nick, to get back to what you said, you know, okay, we gave back the 2 million, well, that's part of your, I realize it's 700,000, if I can use your figure. Yeah, I, I realize that was on us, but last year- Yeah, I realize that was on us, but last year, as the year before, were extraordinary years. We did give back $2 million. I still feel, and I could be wrong, it's an I statement, that that 700,000 needs to go back into the grant and used for, we have to use it for our students. I really don't think it should go to pay for the teachers. I just, I just don't see, I'm, you know, I'll work through this, it's my own issue, I got it, but I still don't know how that works.
I understand the theory of that as well. I'm struggling with, how do we go to the taxpayers and ask for a 5.39 and keep 1.6 in grants that we're not using to help reduce the tax burden? So, yes.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, you know, the juggling act, you're right there. I'm not going to say you're wrong, you're right, it's just.
And that's the discussion, Jerry, and I'm saying, you know, even, even if we used 75%, we're lowering our increase, you know, by .85.
Yeah.
So is that something that we want to do a split? The other thing is that I'd like the board's feeling on perhaps inviting Mike Manjos and Ken to our next meeting and have a discussion with them, because I certainly don't want to send a budget forward that they believe is too high and is subject to reductions. I would like to work with them, continue to work with them, and pick their brains a little bit as far as where their thoughts are. And if there's, I know they, I know that they understand our needs. Obviously, they have also said that the 5.39 is high, I agree with that, it's high, we all know it's a high increase. But Ken and Mike, I've had some conversations with them, they understand the need, they would like to work with us to understand how to fund it. So I would like to invite Mike to our next meeting, if it's okay with everybody here, to have a conversation with him and/or Ken.
Please, okay, by me, Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm aligned to that, Dave. I think we, the part where I want to be most cognizant is the idea of the environment that we're currently in. And we're in an inflationary environment where everybody's dollars are not going as far as possible, right? So if we're, if we're talking about increasing a budget, I think we need to do everything we possibly can to lower that risk, right? So if it's putting the grant money down and it's identifying ways, we have to get that number down while still supplying what we have to do. I think the taxpayer, it's going to be a tough pill to swallow to say, you know, with inflation and everything that's happening, hey, by the way, there's a 5.5% increase to the budget, right? I just, as a taxpayer, that's where my head goes, is everybody's dollar's not going as far as it was before. So I think we need to do everything we possibly can to reduce that uptick, right? If it's using grant money to do it, I think we have to get there.
Jerry, go ahead.
No.
Oh. Dennis.
I think, I agree, I mean, it's got to be a blended solution. We all want to avoid the cliff that could be caused by using it for one thing, and then several years from now, we're in trouble. So I think we have to have their input in regards to how we can socialize the effect of percentages, how to make it fair to the community, because these are tough times, you know? Everybody sees it, you hear it, beyond COVID, you know, there's a lot of, you know, we've got 250 families at the food pantry, I mean, that's, that's a lot in this town, right? So we have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, a lot of people have lost their job, aren't working the jobs they had. So I think we definitely have to get this number down, and the only way we're going to do it is blending it somehow with some percentage. And I respect the fact that, you know, it's an operational expense, but it's an operational expense that we didn't budget for, didn't approve before. Cause and effect, is it, isn't it? I mean, that's the debate that, you know, we're all having. But clearly had some impact because we had to add these people back. So I think, you know, it's prudent to have Mike or somebody from the Board of Finance to come in.
And I know, too, that there are townside concerns, you know, they have yet to put the townside budget together, which, as Ron explains, merges and you come up with that mil rate increase and the percentage that's going to referendum. So they have their concerns on the town side, and, you know, nothing says that at some point in time, the Board of Finance may, may vote to use some of that fund balance. That'll get done at their level. Unfortunately, they're not meeting until the 20th, which is after we have to set our budget. So the best thing we can do is just hear them out. I just want us voting on a budget that supports our faculty and our children, and that we have some confidence in that we can get through the process into referendum. Because last time, last few years, we've, we've done what we had to do, and then, you know, further reductions were made, and then we had, it had to come back to us, and it hits the poor superintendent, so I'd rather, I'd rather get ahead of it and we're not looking at staff cuts. They understand the needs, they understand the enrollments. You know, the increase in enrollment, which is a good thing. I just think we all need to cooperate and, and look at, how do we get this? We all get it, we all see the needs. How do we take a hard look at the, you know, the request for increases, and then how do we work with them to get this passed? Because that's our goal, without getting a million here or there reduced. So Nick, go ahead.
Did you want to go first?
No, it's okay.
I have Jerry, too, yeah.
I, do you want to go? Go ahead.
No, it's all right, go.
I, I think one of the most frustrating things about the process, and this is a process argument, is that, I know on paper, it's 5.39, right? But one of the most frustrating things is that we don't control our own surplus, right? Because if you take the $2 million in surplus that we handed back last year, and, you know, like any corporate business, when you retain your earnings, you can put them into the next year, we can't do that. If you were able to take that 2 million and put it on top of, on this increase, the increase is about 1.6%. So I think that discussion next meeting will be really helpful, because understandably on paper, it's 5.39, but it's really, if you're able to take some of that fund balance, which is well over the Board of Finance's range that they want to be in, the rainy day fund is above their mark, then we'd be able to do some things where we could pass on an increase, but a smaller increase that maybe is more palatable. I mean, just, I had four things on my list here of things that I wanted to see added in. I think we need to budget for the space needs assessment that we talked about many times due to enrollment. I wanted to talk more about the administrator at Font Hollow, to talk more about Lee's comments about what's happening at Font Hollow. I still believe from the finance department merger, we're still missing an FTE there, and the mental health discussion. So we have to have that conversation, but I'm against, you know, using our rainy day fund to artificially lowering taxes. We don't do that in this town, we do it in some other towns regularly, but it's not artificially lowering taxes if you're taking money that you gave back last year to offset some of the costs.
We've done it in Monroe, not to cut you off, Nick, it was done in Monroe.
But not recent, I mean, not recently.
Recently, by this selectman, I got the postcard, I could show you. My tax bill went down $29, and part of that was the rainy day fund.
Well, I'm only talking about this year, so.
Yeah. And nothing says that the Board of Finance won't do that, we just, we just don't know. You know, they certainly could do that. Let me go back to Christine, sorry.
So a couple of questions. One, did you get any, did you open up kindergarten registration to get any idea of what that, those numbers look like?
We've sent the letters out, we're opening up now, yeah.
So you have.
So we don't have any, we don't have any.
So that's a question mark, okay. In terms of the ESSER grants, what programs would you feel you would, if we didn't, if we didn't use this for teachers and staff, what programs do you feel the Monroe School System needs to mitigate the learning loss that's missing, that you're not able to do because we're using it for this?
I think the biggest one we had talked about was the, was the tutoring program.
So that's, that would be the number one program you would want to?
I think we would be able to, I think that's one of the things, we'd be able to target instruction.
How much is that, approximately?
Of course. I'd have, I'd have to go back and look, yeah, yeah. I don't have it off, I'll get a number for you.
Because I'm just wondering, is there a way to.
Yeah.
Balance it, right? If there is truly a program, like Nick's point, that the funds are supposed to be used for learning loss, but also trying to, at least for this year, because these funds go away at next year, correct? Twenty-three?
Actually, the next year.
Or 24?
The next year, right, Ron?
Do you go to 24?
Yeah.
We've got them budgeted through next year.
We have them budgeted for next year.
They could actually go out a year earlier, but we're utilizing, we're using them up by the end of next fiscal year.
Okay. I'm just thinking long-term.
Yeah.
You know, what do we have this funding for to cover the teachers, then? When does it hit our tax?
Yep.
Three years?
When do we hit the cliff?
Right, one, two years, approximately?
But, I mean, theoretically, if, you know, the way we, again, the way we originally have it right now, because we wanted to make sure we had these positions covered, if we use, if we use the grant funds, we'd be out next year.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
And Christine, that's exactly the conversation that I want, I want to have, because if we have something like that, if we identify one or two things like that, that then we can say, okay, we're going to, you know, use 90%.
Right, exactly.
Or 90, whatever, 85%.
What's the number one program that you feel that the school, the students need, the school system needs?
And I'll look out to the administrators, too. I know that's, we had talked about, you know, a targeted tutoring program where we can, you know, address specific deficits for kids.
So Joe, you get us a number on that?
Yep.
Okay, Alan?
Joe, what would that program look like, and who would be doing the tutoring?
You know, we haven't really gotten that far, quite honestly. What would it, would it look like? You know, we've talked about it being either a, you know, either an after-school program for students, or, you know, one of the things we've learned through COVID is, you know, we don't have to, you know, have the, you know, the building be a barrier for us, and we could do it at night, you know, via, you know, Google, Google, Google Meet or something like that. I think what we'd want to have is, you know, we've, you know, talked about, and we haven't gone far into it, because we haven't really gotten, you know, much past this, but, you know, what we've talked about is having our teachers, whether it's regular ed or special education students, I'm sorry, regular education or special education teachers, identifying and targeting specific kids based on our baseline assessments, using those baseline assessments to, you know, to really hone in and target specific needs that kids have. Whether, you know, at the, at the younger ages, you know, is it, you know, phonemic awareness, you know, at the, you know, at any grade, you know? What are the targeted skills that kids are missing based on our baseline assessments?
So these would be kids, if the tutoring program wasn't available to them, they would probably end up going to PPT and.
Very well could.
For special ed.
Very well could.
This is something that would help.
Absolutely.
With them.
Absolutely.
And Alan, that's key, if we can, we can.
Right.
Get some early intervention and prevent long-term, right? Jerry, go ahead.
Ron, what is the rainy day fund at now with this added? With the 2 million that we gave, the 2 million, what is the rainy day fund now? Yeah, I know, it's on your slide, that's why I asked you. I can't see it.
No, it's, it's actually not on the slide, but I'll, oh, wait, I'm sorry, I got the So on the, and it really hasn't changed much, because we haven't, you, you know, the last caper that's on the, so audit reports are on here also, so audit reports, the last caper is the 20 caper, we haven't finished the 21 audit yet. So basically, I'm going to go to the balance sheet of the town. For the general fund. Is that legible? Unassigned fund balance, so, actually, I would ignore the, we had, we had a fund balance assigned for the budget, the $8 million is included in that number, so you could wrap it in. You're, you're at, you're at right around 1117, right around 17 million?
And what was the cap they had in place for? Did they have a ceiling?
They have it, they have a ceiling, it's not, it's not a number ceiling, it's based on the percentage of the budget.
That's what I thought.
And what they have is a, they have a range of, they have a target of 12 and 1/2, and they have a range of one to two months of operating expenditures.
And, so 17 million is, is what?
It's at the top end of the range.
Right.
It is at the top end of the range.
Thank you.
Which I believe is 16, it's two twelfths of 1/6, 16.
And Ron, too, it would, wouldn't it be fruitful, too, to have the conversation? Because obviously, the Board of Finance can use this as a, as a vote. They can use some of it next year, they can use it for the following year, but, you know, our concern is the cliff. So is that on, you know, they're aware of it, we've discussed it at Board of Finance meetings with them, so how, you know, what are their thoughts on this? And, you know, long-term, long-term use of the money? So that discussion could be had as well. Dennis, go ahead.
Getting back to your point of order, I think you called for a vote whether we wanted the Board of Finance to be here at our next meeting.
No, I was just asking for consensus.
Okay, do we have consensus?
I think there is, yeah, to invite.
And second question, is it fair to you, Joe, to get that other issue of the tutoring? Are you going to have a solid number for us next, by the 18th?
Okay, I can get one, I'm sure, I'm sure we could work with the staff to come up with a number.
Great, thank you.
Alan, go ahead.
Joe, do any of the surrounding communities have like that tutoring program that you would look at, or have other communities created a tutoring program with success, or?
Not that I'm aware of, Alan.
Okay.
We actually had put it, so, you know, I.
Yeah.
We had actually put it in the plan that we, something we wanted to do, and then we had to do all of the staffing because of enrollment needs. The state actually reached out to us to get details of what was, who and what it looked like, because they found it to be a very interesting idea, allowing, you know, we had to do so, what we did and how it played. And we had to share with them that we haven't updated the grant yet, we say that we're not able to do that, we actually needed to sell the staff, because we were waiting to see the right circumstances, we do the work that's being done, and whatever happens, it's sort of time. So at that point, I think there were like three other places that they had not reached out to, that we're moving that email out, but I'm not sure that they got to do that to anybody.
Okay. I could definitely check.
Nick, go ahead.
I just wanted to do a couple of quick hits, since I talked last time. Christine's point was a great one, by the way, about what else could, you know, what is, what are we missing that this money could be used for? Another thing I'd like to add to that, which I had in my list of four things to add to the budget, is mental health dollars. I think mental health dollars for, not only for our students, by the way, but also for our staff, for our teachers. Something else that I could see this grant being used for that might not have been there in a typical year, like, that's what this grant is for, right? Is maybe helping teachers, which I know we're already doing, by the way, because Sheila talked about it in her budget presentation, but about, you know, teaching through trauma, teaching in trauma, right? Not only the trauma that the students are going through in a pandemic, but that the teachers are going through, right? So instead of mental health dollars going into the operating budget, I think that would be a great source of funding for, for ESSER dollars. Also, I think it's important, you know, when we're talking about the numbers of the budget, that we're 2/3 of the budget. So when this, I know the mil rate is a little bit more complicated than I'm simplifying it, but if we pass a six, right, to the Board of Finance and it gets referendum at six, then the mil rate's going to be about four, just from us, and then we don't know what the town's going to be. So I think, which leads to my last point, is that nothing's ever going to be put back in when it leaves here. So the, this will be my third budget. The last two budgets that I've talked about and voted on is that I've always said, when our budget leaves us, we have to make sure that it has everything in it that we believe the Monroe Public School Districts needs to run how we think it should run, right? The Board of Finance is never going to say, oh, you wanted something additional that you didn't vote on before? They could, but I think it's very unlikely. So that's why I kind of brought those additional things up, because it has to leave us with what we think it should have. It, I don't know, I mean, Jerry would know, or those who have been paying attention in town longer would know, after it leaves. after it leaves us, does it ever go up? I don't think so.
We've always said, once it's cut, we never get it back.
Right.
Never.
Dennis, go ahead.
I was going to say, obviously, you know, being 80% of the budget, right? We have to come to some compromise with the town. And then you're bringing up a totally different issue, which we went to last month with, or last meeting, with the mental health issues in anguish. Um, that's a public health issue in my mind, right? That's not just a school issue, that's the town, right? So I think, you know, those type issues, we need to assess better and get better grounded with better expertise in regards to what the issues are out there and really learn from that and decide whether we're going to do that as a school or we're going to do something more as a town. So I think we've got to get better grounded on that before we start adding expense or adding bodies, in my opinion. So I think, I think there's a need, there's no doubt, right? And there's obviously, you know, funds that have to be allocated to that. But, you know, at this point, I, I'm not comfortable with where we are with that, you know, just so you know my own personal feelings. Um, but, you know, I think, you know, having the town here to discuss what the ramifications are for the town is prudent and we can discuss all the issues of, you know, giving money back and taking money away and do that, but, you know, having sat on the other side on Town Council and then on several committees, Board of Health being one, I mean, I think we have to find a way to resolve this collectively because we can't, we can't hit the cliff, right? These growing needs are going to continue to grow. Expenses are going to continue to expand. They're expanding on the other side too. I mean, the town's expenses are going up too, right? We just, we hit it with our, you know, operational budget, right? You've got a, you know, 20, you know, 5% increase in fuel or 6% increase in fuel. They're having that too, so collectively, we have, we have to work with them to come up with a better solution because I don't think that's palatable by anybody, depending where the money goes and how you divide that nickel and whether the $2 million back for what, you know, what money they have. I think we have to come to some collective agreement in regards to what that's going to be, that's fair to the taxpayers, meets all our needs and takes care of our growth. So that's, you know, I'm the new guy, so, you know, I think, you know, that's, that's the approach I'm going to take. It's like, what do we really need? What can we do together? Because we obviously have things that are beyond our capabilities and what, what can we share? So that's kind of where I'm at.
Alan?
Yeah, I would just argue that, um, it, it's like Maslow's hierarchy of needs. If you're not, if your social emotional wellbeing isn't intact, you're not going to be available for learning. Which is going to obviously pose other problems. I'm just kind of curious what you meant by like better assessing the situation.
On the mental health, well, what I brought up last time was working collectively with the hospitals and other healthcare providers, the guy to get a better feel for, it's a community issue, right? All those schools are having it too. We're having it, it's not just the kids, it's also the families. I mean, that's, that's something that's screaming out for getting some more expertise in here. I mean, I know we can throw bodies at things and have kids meet one-on-one and have that addressed, but I don't know if that's taking care of the issue completely. And I think, you know, what we need to do is kind of, because I saw pain last meeting, right? I saw absolute fear and you see those numbers and the staggering jump, that's scary, right? And that's something we have to get to root cause analysis as best we can to figure out what those issues are and then come up with some solution internally and externally as to how we're going to deal with that, in my opinion, right? Do we bring in an expert to assess? Do we have the public health, Dr. O'Reilly come and talk about it from a public health standpoint? Or Nancy Brunt from a, you know, Board of Health standpoint? What things can we do for ourselves to help the staff deal with this? What do we need to go outside to do to get more help and benefit so we can deal with this? Because a five, a four-fold, five-fold increase in some schools is just, it's mind-boggling to me and I don't think we, as individuals, can deal with it the way it is, at least not what I've seen so far, although I'm the new member.
Well, we have experts in the school already. We have school psychologists, we have school counselors, we have clinical social worker.
Right, you know, I got, right.
Those are the ones that are telling us, you know, that we, you know, need more people. The problem is, you can't just take people from the hospital and put them in the building with kids because they're not certified, they're not fingerprinted, they don't have the proper credentials.
I don't think with the medical profession the way it is, you're going to get people to come in.
They're not going to do it for free.
They're so.
Don't say, okay, here's my, I'm going to bring in some psychiatrists and.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying camp, yeah, I mean, there are systems, both Yale and both Hartford are putting out on-campus solutions for colleges, where they put people there, the core, core campus. I'm not suggesting that we do that, but we can use their expertise and we get to talk with our experts.
You're going to write a hefty check for those psychiatrists?
Maybe not, I mean, I've reached out to some, I, I reached out to the president of St. Vincent's after our last meeting because she said it was a good idea to talk to the hospitals, right? That's what I heard. So I reached out to Bill Jennings and said, all right, here's our need, here's our concern. And he, he said, all right, it's going to take me two weeks to get you, get you somebody who knows what's going on to help you with this. He loves the idea. In two hours, he got back to me and got me Dr. O'Doy, who's in charge of the system of, uh, O'Day, sorry. Missing out my O'Doy's and O'Days. Dr. O'Day, who got back to me from, who runs the Hartford Healthcare System for Mental Health and is running all these on-campus things, goes, that's a phenomenal idea for a school and maybe we should look into doing it. And he's willing to come in and talk to us, talk to our experts about what they're seeing so he can help, you know, either it's build a curriculum, help them through their angst, whatever it is, have the conversation to say, all right, here's what we're seeing, let me lend an impartial ear, no cost. They'll do it for free. Come on in, help our staff, get through this, help them build whatever curriculum, if you, if you want to call it a curriculum, to kind of help them do better than having people, having kids. Go to a hospital, get ejected with, what I'm hearing, what I heard, was kind of poor discharge planning, right? They're getting thrown back on our lap, they're throwing the class with, what? That's not fair to the kids, it's not fair to our staff and it's not fair to the system. So I think we have to work better, plan better and get more bodies involved to deal with that before we just go, I mean, yes, with one-on-one counseling help, no doubt. But there comes a point of diminishing returns. And as this is escalating fourfold, fivefold, you are not going to have enough bodies nor enough budget to be able to increase whatever funds we use. So I think we have to start thinking differently as a board and as a school system to incorporate other public health people into it. That's all I'm suggesting.
So that person would be a child psychiatrist that you were talking about? I don't, like, the person you mentioned that said?
Dr. O'Day, he's in charge of Hartford Health's system-wide mental health issues. So he's doing, he's doing it system-wide for them and St. Vincent's, in this case, local. I did not hear back from Bridgeport Hospital yet, but it was a thought. I threw all that to Joe.
Jerry, did you want to add anything for that?
Well, I'm, I'm just a little confused. I met with, I, I met with the high, high school staff and I, I know and if I, I say this wrong, you, you can help me out, Steve. But I, I think a majority of the high schools in the area have three social workers and we have one. Wasn't there a time, Joe, we were sharing a town social worker with the schools? What you're saying is very good, Dennis, but it doesn't.
Jerry, we don't know whether we need five or six.
Dennis, it doesn't, I understand that. But if they come in and meet with our staff of 20, counselors, social workers, when most systems, our size and our DURG have 40.
Okay.
Doing the job, our 20's already stretched. Now, we're bringing in a professional, which is great from the outside to tell them what to do, but they're still not going to have the manpower hours to do what this professional's telling them to do. I'm off for what you're saying.
You may be correct, I just don't have the expertise to know that. They may come in and say, you have exactly the right number or you need 20 more people.
I understand what you're saying, it's, I'm just.
That's why you bring in an expert to say, we don't have, pardon me, limited intelligence here. I don't know whether we have the expertise to define it as best. I had, I did not hear that convincingly in the arguments I've heard. I heard the crisis, I heard the stress and I heard the, yeah, I saw the growing numbers. From my perspective, that screams to me, get somebody to assess this, help our staff assess this to make sure that maybe you're right, maybe it is three social workers we need or six social workers. It's a one, you know, comparing and contrasting is great, but, you know, and, and when it came to the kind, I mean, it's like the tutoring, there's nobody in this country doing the tutoring? We are, we're, we're so myopic, we have to look at Connecticut only? It's like, if that's helping reduce the, you know, the amount of kids coming into the special needs programs, well, somebody may have done that somewhere. And if we can tap into that expertise elsewhere, I think that's helpful, right? Whatever the solution is, you know, it's, it pays to listen to it.
Just be prepared for the solution.
Yeah, that's right, I think that's what our job is, right? We have to be meeting the needs, then we have to look at it.
Especially if it involves writing curriculum, that's more money, which is, yeah, it's, it's a process.
But is it necessary?
Because it sounds like, maybe I'm wrong, Joe, but do we have an SEL curriculum? That's like recently established or?
I don't know if there's necessarily recently established. We've had a developmental guidance curriculum that's been in place for a while, K8, and then the programming at the high school is, you know, more geared towards secondary plan, you know, post-secondary planning and whatnot.
That's just my understanding that how school systems work, like, you know, Dennis contacted this, um, medical doctor who would be willing to come to the school, but it would just be like a workshop.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not my, it's not my job to go hire consultants, right? I'm just saying, I brought it up as an issue, I was following up on it, right? So it's like, I come from that world, right, the hospital world. And it's like, they're here to service the community. If they're not servicing, I did not hear they were servicing the community. I heard we had been poor discharge planning and I heard we have issues of growth that are outstanding. So it's like, let's reach out to the people who are supposedly serving the community, both major healthcare systems and see what we can come up with. And at least one of the two responded as willing and actively willing to participate, so. It's worth the talk. You're right, the answer may not be what a fiscal conservative as myself would want, but is it prudent to get to the needs of what the town needs? That's the question, what a school system needs.
Nick, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, just a couple of things to follow up on here. Um, I think, you know, reaching out to private entities is, you know, that there's always a symbiotic relationship between private and public. We also have state agencies, we have DMS, we have SDE, we have DPH. I don't know if there's other, um, you know, student mental health, um, programs that they have, but I'd be interested to see if that is something we could look into.
Well, I can add to that if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
And since I thought it was a public health issue when I heard it last, right? I reached out to Mike O'Reilly, who's our medical director for Health Department, and Nancy Brant, who's also our Health Department. And they'd be interested in showing up at a meeting here too to talk about it because they too see the increases on the, on the health crisis issue in town. So it began, and they also have multiple resources that they would talk about, but to your point, that you could be brought in to help. It's worth, it's worth the ask in my mind.
So, and to that point, and, and getting back to this conversation about root cause analysis and, and, I agree with you, I agree with you about all of that. My only problem is, is that, you know, in two weeks, we have to vote on a budget. And, and I, I don't, I don't agree that here, us, that at this particular juncture in the budget process, we have to worry about what the town is going to do on the town's side. I heard at the last meeting, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, that our Director of Guidance told us in a public meeting, all of us, that we don't even have a skeletal version of what she thinks is appropriate for the size of our district.
For mental health issues.
For mental health issues.
The Guidance Counselor said that, right?
Yeah.
So it's like.
So do I, I said it right here.
Right, I know, I heard, I watched and it was like, I, I felt her pain, right?
So my, just to finish my thought here, my concern is that it could take years to talk about, and it's go, people will do this and people will make this their scholarly, their professional scholarly life, that Generation Z and Alpha, social media, COVID's effect on 10 to 18-year-olds, you know, we're going to be talking about this for decades, but right now, and I said this at the last meeting, I feel like it's triage. And I feel like by saying that, to just throw money at it, I just, I, I can't wrap my head around that phrase. We need people, even outside of COVID. If COVID never happened, we heard that we need people. And it's, it's not that if we could just help one additional, even, even if we can't help 99, if we can help one, then that's a dollar well spent.
Well, wins win. I mean, it, you said we need three, right? You know, it's like, why don't we do a formal assessment? I, I'd be, you know, I don't want to commit town, you know, school resources, but I'm pretty sure I could get this meeting together in a week to have people talk. And that's just a conversation to have with our staff to say, here's what we see our needs are. Help us educate the board or help us educate the town and we've got what we need. Then it makes a much easier self to me to kind of say to the town, you know, we need three social workers because we need, and a professional outside group said, we need as well these kind of resources, right? Right now, it seems like we're just doing what we've done, right? And I'm not saying the need's not there, I'm just saying that what is enough? What do you realize? I saw genuine pain and concern in people's eyes and presentation. You say it's a half FTE or it's one FTE. Maybe it isn't, maybe it is three FTEs, maybe it's several more doctors, I don't know. And to be a responsible board member, I want to know. I want to know what it takes to keep this town, this school district, our teachers safe and stress-free as best we can do that. And I don't feel comfortable that our budget decisions are along those lines right now make that happen. Whether it's one, two, three, seven, you know, 700, I'm not feeling comfortable about it addressing the needs and the concerns. I didn't hear that. That's what I'm looking to get. And if I have, you know, if I can expedite it, I'll expedite. I don't want to step on your toes and now this is done, but it's like, guys, we have an issue here. And it's more than just money, right?
And, and just to come back to the, the grant, the, the grant use and all of that, I think we have an opportunity here where we have $1.6 million in federal funding that we could use for some programs and if we can use the grant money to help fund the staff, we're not looking at staff reductions so that we can get the, the staff bolstered. You know, so we can get the, we can get the social worker at the high school, we can get, we can get those positions in. We do need to scrutinize every single one of these positions, that's our job, and prioritize all, all of these positions and the ideas that are going around the table for positions. Um, I also wanted to ask, Joe, in the Capitol, did Dan put anything in the Capitol about, we had some conversations about the Jockey Hollow air conditioning unit?
I don't think there was anything put in the, in the Capitol. I think Dan was getting a, he was going to get quotes to see, you know, who we'd be looking at.
Do you know if he would have that by our next meeting?
I could ask him.
I, I think we've identified that as a priority and perhaps we can put that in the Capitol. Justin, did you, sorry, wait, Justin, did you want us?
Yeah, I, uh, two things. First, Joe, is, you know, there were two major drivers that we were talking about when we, when we hit on the budget increase. Um, first was enrollment, right? Number two was mental health. Those were the two, you know, in your executive summary that you had hit on. In terms of the breakdown, the mental health component, what, what is driving, what percent or dollar figure is, is, is mental health?
I'd have to go back and itemize things, I can go back and do that.
The other thing too, just to clarify, I think, um, I, I don't disagree at all that I think from a resourcing perspective, just, you know, hearing the numbers competitively with other districts, et cetera, and, and Anne's, you know, assessment of that situation, I think from a resourcing perspective, there's an opportunity there. I think the, the main issue I had with, with some of, some of what Anne was talking about in terms of addressing the root cause was we don't have a firm grasp on the root cause. We don't. And I think, you know, addressing the downstream effect, you're not hitting the cause and therefore the effect is going to continue to exacerbate or continue to grow. So I, you know, my ask is that we, we get our hands around what is driving this? Because we all see the numbers, we all see the projections, we all see the impact, right? Um, I, but what we're not hearing specifically is what is driving that and how are we going to address that, right? I don't know, I don't know anybody who's been very clear, not just here, right? Just out in general, through the research that I've put into it. Nobody is very clear in terms of this is being driven by this specifically. I think we, we have to get our hands around that and then make sure that we're addressing that problem if we truly want to make sure that we're stopping this and, and bettering the kids over, over time. Otherwise, we're just putting essentially a bandage on a wound that's just going to continue to grow.
I hear you, I think we're.
Yeah, just one, one caveat, because I came down pretty hard, I guess, as people see this from the outside. None of this was meant to belittle the staff's job, what they've been doing. I just want to make sure that we're giving you the right resources for other times and that we're doing a good assessment to make sure that you have what you need for our kids and yourselves at this present time. And that may be, may have major budget ramifications, there's no doubt. But I think we have to do. But I think we have to do a better job of finding out what that is than, you know, I've heard so far. So that's, that's the only reason I brought it up.
Joe, go ahead.
All I was going to say is, I think we're going to have, I mean, just from what I, my experience with talking to every other superintendent in the, in the state, I don't know if there's one root cause and I think that's, I think that's the tricky thing. Uh, I think it's, I think there's a, I think there's a lot of factors at, at play. Maybe that it can all be, you know, somehow addressed in, you know, in some way or another, but I think that, you know, we can all surmise a million different things. Social media, peer pressure, the pandemic, you know, a number of things. But I think we'll have a little bit of a hard time. I don't, I think it's worthy to look for that.
Yeah, I think to that point, I mean, healthcare systems don't like to waste money, right? If they're putting resources on college campuses and setting up course centers, there's a reason for it. And it's not just K two twelve. Clearly it's spreading to other age groups that are, they're having to deal with. It's a public crisis of sorts, right? So the more help we can get from anybody who's an expert, I think it'd just serve us well.
I mean, this issue is way too complex to say one root cause. I think, you know, the idea is that, you know, what are the major drivers of it? And I think you hit on a couple there. I, you know, Anne spoke to COVID driving a portion of that, but what specifically about COVID? That's why I tried drilling down a little bit further on public policy, what, what the isolation component, et cetera. What, what are those root causes that are ultimately impacting this and really creating this exponential problem? I mean, when you see those charts and projections, they are off the charts, right? Pun intended. The idea that, you know, it's going up, up and then all of a sudden, you know, you don't even have a graph big enough to fit it on. What is driving that? Because that can't happen, right? We can't allow that projection to come to fruition. Because that is, if you think about the, the state that we're in right now with kids and their mental state, if that actually plays out, think about where we're going to be. There's not enough resourcing to fix that problem, right? That's, so I, I think we need to address that upstream as opposed to downstream because I don't think we get to it if, if we're, if we're too late.
Nick.
Yes, can I make a request of the chair that he may reject if he so desires? But, um, outside of the people that Dennis has contacted, which is great, by the way, we, getting back to Alan's point, I think we do have people in our school system right now who are experts in this. So the request would be, could the superintendent work with Anne and other people in the district over the next week and a half before our next meeting to see what they think a baseline mental health structure for our school district would look like? And the only reason I ask that is because those people work for the board and people at Hartford Health and they could call you, they could not call you. I know, I have no doubt that you could put a meeting together in a week. You could probably have it done by tomorrow if you really wanted to. But those people work for us and so, and they have a boss who can make requests of them. So that would just be my only ask, that perhaps at our next meeting, we could have numbers and titles of people to get to where Anne said we would be at some type of base level.
Like a, like a current organizational chart and a desired organizational chart?
Yeah, and things that are, and things that are included in the budget and in Esser.
That address it, right.
And things that would need to be additional that they believe.
Is that okay, Joe?
Sure.
And I think the rotten taste in my mouth was exactly what Nick just put.
Sure, he says, yeah. Saving homework, that's all.
I really think we, we need, I mean, we hire these people. They're our professionals. We look at them every day. Dennis, don't take this the wrong way. I don't want an outside agency coming telling me anything until I talk to my employees.
Oh, absolutely. No part of what I'm saying is away from that. That's your first stop, right? These are your, these are your troops that are dealing in the, they're in the trenches every day, right? They know what they need and they know what they're experiencing and we source some of that, okay? So I think, yeah, that's your, your baseline is to figure out, okay, what's our go-to plan today? Here's what we have. Here's what we want. Here, here's what we need. Here's what we want, right? I think you do that, but you can bring in another expert to say, here's another way of looking at it, right? Maybe I come up with a core curriculum or core syllabi for the paraprofessionals to be able to do the baseline or something, right? I don't know. I'm not in the field, right? But having an outside perspective doesn't hurt whether you take your advice or not is another question.
And we also have a medical advisor. The board has a medical advisor too.
Yeah.
Right.
Now, I, I think the more information we can get.
I agree.
Um, the better because we're going to have to scrutinize these, uh, the superintendent's budget and these positions and we're going to have to prioritize. And if we have to move some around to put the priority to, to the mental health, um, you know, and the enrollment, then that's what we do. Um, I will, just to kind of wrap up, I will put out the invitations for our next meeting um, to have a, a much better discussion, I hope. Um, but we are going to have to be prepared to, um, scrutinize and make that decision next meeting. So, Joe, we'll keep the agenda light again.
Sure.
And, um, and we will have to vote on the budget, but I think the more information that we get from Town Hall, Board of Finance, our mental health experts, we'll get some information on how much those, that programming costs. Um, uh, as well as that one that we talked about too, Joe, the, um, sorry, the Wilson, Orton, Gillingham.
Orton, Gillingham and Wilson.
Um, things like that. And then we're going to have to prioritize. We're going to have to make some tough decisions. And hopefully the information that we get, uh, from the, from the town side, um, uh, on, on the use of grants and their interest or not interest in using fund balance will help us make a final decision. But we're going to have some tough work to do next meeting.
Bring your calculators.
Bring your calculators, but I, I know we can do it. Anything, any final issues on the budget before we move on? Hearing none, we'll move to new business, which there is none of unless I'll open up the floor, any new business from the floor? None at all. Jerry.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Jerry has a motion to adjourn. Second. Christine, second. Hearing no objections. Motion approved. Good night.